Is fast.
Is it?
We're not running late.
Run.
Okay, welcome everyone to the Shelton Board of Education meeting. It is Wednesday, October 22nd. We will call the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Joan Middlefield.
Here.
Patricia Moonin.
Here.
A Koutash.
Here.
Lorraine Rosner.
Here.
Amy Romano.
Here.
James Orazetti.
Here.
Jim Phian.
Here.
Anthony Smaraglino.
Here.
Jason Nevs.
Here.
Also in attendance, Dr. Ken Serenich, John Calhoun, Jackie Toolings, Tracy Hussey, Kristin Santilli, Glenn Newman, Stephanie Sanborn, and Brock Gaitis.
Great, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
For the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which stands one nation under God. Beautiful, the rich, best for all.
Okay, can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table number, item number 15, please.
Okay, can I get a second on that motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, can I now get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve the amended agenda, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, item number three, approval of the consent agenda.
Move, Madam Chair.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second made by Lorraine Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number four. Tonight, we have, for our presentations and recognitions, we have our tenure teachers. Dr. Serenich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is, these are one of the, we do this annually this time of year here in October, and I love the recognition of our tenure teachers because although we all know the traditions here in Shelton and the longstanding traditions and people who have dedicated longstanding careers in, in the Shelton community, um, is fantastic, but when we cultivate our own and continue to grow over time, uh, it, it's just, it's, it's really good for the organization, it's good for the community, and we like to recognize the teachers who achieve tenure. Tenure does not an easy process, um, particularly nowadays within teacher and teacher certification as less and less teachers are going into the profession, um, to be able to have someone commit themselves to our district, we want to recognize them publicly. It takes a four-year process for new teachers, they have to go through the team certification process on top of also the evaluating process that the state of Connecticut mandates us to do, um, for certified staff. Um, but here with us tonight, we have a group of fine individuals, um, who I'd like to publicly rec- recognize for receiving tenure, um, as of this evening. Um, I am going to read off a list of names, I know some of them could not be with us this evening, I'm gonna read off the entire list. Um, when you hear your name, please stand and remain standing to be recognized, so I will just go through the whole list. So, Michelle Andrews from Shelton High School. Sarah Asser. I know it's Mufasi, but I could, our Siri, thank you, new, married name, so I, sorry about that, thank you, Sarah. Um, Samantha Bender, Bender Niegel. Thank you. And that's why she's on this time.
Hey.
Uh, Margaret Bruce from Sunnyside School. Uh, Frank Camarino from Shelton Intermediate School. Uh, Gina Casper, Casperristo from, from Sunnyside School, thank you. Uh, Thomas Cummings, who is at Mohegan and Sunnyside, he splits. Um, Kristin Donovan from Shelton Intermediate School. Janelle Duranty from Mohegan School. Uh, Robert Hawkins from Shelton Intermediate School. Megan Kelly from Boothill School. Haley McNamara from Elizabeth Shelton. Uh, Lauren Mccone from Shelton High School. Catherine Miller from Elizabeth Shelton. Uh, Sarah Becca Mueller from Shelton High School. Jennifer Recker from Shelton High School. Zoe Ritchie from Mohegan School. And, uh, Jana Spogal from Sunnyside School. Congratulations on that. Before we all sit down, I'm gonna ask those teachers to please come up so we can take a picture, um, of your achievement that we can post on social media. So, can you, if you can join me up here for a picture, that would be great, thank you.
Kristen.
Come on, it's your last one.
Okay.
Get ready to scoot back. You have to get back.
All right.
I'm gonna be the guy that, guys.
Guys are.
Um, it should be on, you should, just the blue light is on.
Are we getting, question, I got things, hold on. Why don't I call and tell them what's your best thing? Tell them I will call.
For another big one. Yeah, well, let's, oh, thank you. I'm around Saturday.
He'll do it on Saturday.
Yeah, well, he came to my house on a Sunday.
Okay.
Sunday morning he came.
Okay, Saturday what?
Madam Chair, if I can take a superintendent's prerogative, I'd like to just do an, uh, a presentation not on the agenda. So, while we're doing recognitions and press, uh, presentations, we would be remiss if we would not recognize two board members this evening who are serving their last official act, um, as board members. Uh, tonight, Mr. Orazetti and Mrs. Romano will be, um, ending their terms as elected board members. I always like to remind the public that board of ed members are elected, they are unpaid volunteers for the work they do. And these two individuals have given countless hours, days, months, years, um, towards the Shelton Public School system. Jimmy himself has been a part of this board for, we, we couldn't really get an accurate count, Mr. Orazetti, we tried to figure this out, we have somewhere near 15 years, um, you had a time that you were on and off again, uh, we're averaging somewhere around 15-year service in the city of Shelton as a, as a board member. And of course, Mrs. Romano has been with us for the past six years, um, the latest two, serving as our chair. You know, your support to our school system, uh, your support to administration, certified staff, staff within it, and most importantly, um, the, the countless work and effort that you have put towards the students in this city, uh, will always be remembered and recognized. And I'd like to just take a moment to thank both of you for everything that you've done. I have a present for each of you, so.
Oh.
Hidden under the table.
Oh, hidden.
Looks like we have a new, new member in training here.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for the gift.
Thank you again.
I'll hold my comments, I too. But thank you very much for recognizing us.
Thank you very much.
And the gift. Unless you want us to open it now?
No, no, you can.
Okay.
The check is?
Yeah. It's a little heavy to be a check. I don't know.
It's two mugs.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe it's two mugs and there's a check in the mug.
Ever.
Yeah, I know, you never know. Okay, we will move on to item number five, student board of education representatives report. Today, tonight, we have our two new student reps for the school year, we're very excited. Um, why don't we have, I just know first names, Brock and Stephanie, correct? I don't know you, Stephanie, thank, I'm, I'm welcome tonight, I do know Brock, he's, yeah, so I'm, I'm really glad to have you guys here tonight and can't wait to hear what you have to say, whoever wants to go first?
So, and I'm just gonna tell both of us, if you can pull the mic close to you, then, you know.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Um, hi, everyone, um, in case I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, my name is Brock Gaitis, um, I'm a sophomore, I represent the underclassmen at Shelton High School, um, I'm also my class's vice president. Um, just some things that have happened around the school over the past couple of months, ever since the start of the school year. Mainly this month, uh, it's been our pink month at the high school. We had our pink pep rally, um, it was, in my opinion, a resounding success, I know a lot of the students and staff members praised it, we also got really good feedback from the people at Channel 3 Television who televised the pep rally. Also had our pink game for football. Um, just some updates around sports, we had, SWIM just had a big win, they're going to SECs and states, um. We also have our college and financial aid fair, we had that recently, um, and we just had yesterday our junior ring breakfast for our juniors, so.
Uh, hi, I'm Stephanie Sanborn, I'm a junior, I'm the representative for the upperclassmen. Um, so we've had a pretty great start to the school year, uh, some things that we're looking forward to is our homecoming dance on November 8th, as well as the corresponding football game. Uh, we also have, where our clubs are meeting tomorrow for the second time this school year, all of our clubs are student-led and founded, so it's always very exciting. Uh, we have PSATs for underclassmen on Friday, and we recently recognized, um, some merit scholarship, I think it was quarterfinalists, at our school from last year. And on November 9th, uh, we'll recognize the inductees to the Shelton High School Hall of Fame, we're looking forward to that.
Great, does anyone on the board have any questions for our student reps tonight?
Welcome.
Yes, yeah, welcome.
Good job.
Welcome, we look forward to hearing what's going on at the high school and hearing, and anything else too, just, you know, in the community that you wanted to report out, because I know there's the clubs and everything, so it's, it's great to hear, to keep us updated. Um, and, uh, yeah, we're glad that you guys are here. Was it a, was it a tough, um, what was the, you have to write an essay to get in, or do you have to, it was elected, right?
Uh, yeah, the students voted and we had to create videos.
Oh, and create videos, oh, okay, what was the video about?
Uh, just one minute about why we, uh, were running.
Okay, great, you wanna share why? Out of curi-, not to push you on the spot, I'm just curious what you said. Just a little quick, you know, like. Yeah.
Um, I ran for the position, I think it's a great opportunity for like the student body to connect with the board of education, especially at the high school, where I think we should have more of like a say and stuff, and we can propose issues, I've been talking to like, um, some of the, um, uh, student council representatives who have some great ideas they would like to bring to meetings, and I kinda just wanted to help represent this.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, and so for me, you know, uh, as my class vice president, I'm happy to represent them, give them a voice in the school and what we're doing, but also, I wanna give them a voice outside of the school and give them voices, you know, here at the board of education, and I think that's very important, especially with, you know, issues and things that are looked highly upon, so we can improve and better the school in general, so.
Great, perfect, that's what we like to hear, keep the momentum going. Thank you. Okay, moving on, public comment. For board of ed policy 9323, 9325, five minutes is allotted to each speaker, no board of ed employee, student, or community member shall be defamed within public comment. Any members of the public who wish to speak briefly before the board must only comment on matters associated with the board of education but business. Persons wishing to address the Shelton Board of Education are limited to Shelton residents, parents, or current students, Shelton students, employees of Shelton Public Schools, or service contracted providers of Shelton Public Schools. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Anyone signed up? Anyone from the public that would like to speak? Last call, anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay, sensing none, we will move on to reports of standing committees. Teaching and learning, that is me. Uh, let's see, during the October 14th teaching and learning meeting, the office of teaching and learning presented updated test score data for students in grades K through 4 in reading and math. For reading, we are using DIBBLES assessment, which includes six subtests measuring students' progress towards skilled reading. These areas include phonological awareness, alphabetical and phonics principles, reading fluency and accuracy, and reading comprehension. Overall, all grade levels are performing exceptionally well. In math, the district has transitioned from using NWEI to the M-class assessment system. Since this is our first year, M-class, we only have one year of data to review, however, initial results are very promising, with students performing strongly across grade levels. For upper grades 5 through 11, IXL is being used as the assessment and practice tool for math, science, and social studies. Student performance in these areas, subjects, continue to trend with average to above-average range in multiple areas. A detailed breakdown of all this data in the, will be available in the teaching and learning meeting minutes, if you wanna review them, I know that we also handed them out to the board members last week, um, and a detailed break, uh, and the next meeting is scheduled for November 11th, we are having one at 4:30 PM, uh, and the office of teaching and learning will present test back scores. We finally got those back. Okay, even more scores, so it seems like we're doing test scores October and November, the time of year.
It is.
Okay? So that is what's happening in teaching and learning. But everyone looks great, test scores look great, that's what we wanna hear. So, next, finance committee, Mr. Orazetti.
Oh, finance committee, uh, we postponed this meeting this week, Jaclyn, if you have any report, updates for us, present time?
So, we are still in the process of going general ledger mapping, pull every, our ERP system, um, there's a lot of nuances if, how we pull, correct, so that's challenging, I mean, hoping to get some type of resolution. And then I did provide, did provide the board members with a revenue schedule, uh, event ticket sales, and also updated budget report.
Questions?
We're looking good.
Thank you.
Everybody should have those numbers in front of you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Policy committee.
Sure, policy, uh, committee met, like to make a motion to, uh, move items 1 through 10, uh, review, I was gonna be taking on, or next.
I'll second.
Hi.
Oh, you're waiting for me? I thought you weren't making the motion, I'm sorry.
He did make, no, he made it, she seconded.
All in favor?
Swear to God.
Sorry.
Well, my watch says you haven't left it.
I, I, I thought you were doing it, you're the policy committee chair, I'm here. Okay, item D, buildings and grounds committee.
Uh, buildings and grounds met, uh, last month, uh, not, we're scheduled to meet, uh, again next month. Um, there was communication, uh, earlier this month that we finally completed the, uh, Mohegan School roof, um, that's been done, um, that was a big part, a big step, uh, a big, big part of the list knocked off. Um, there's communication with the possible rehab of the, uh, the track, um, around our main field, and, uh, that's, that's, that's about it, we'll, we'll schedule, uh, our next meeting for, uh, for next month.
Good job on that roof, Jay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, possibly outside of the main building here, central office, we'll be taking care of the high grass, hopefully, fingers crossed. Rocks too, yeah, yeah, grass in the spring is what I'm being told, so we'll see.
It looks mud in the winter, grass in the spring?
Well, maybe. Maybe frozen, frozen dirt and then, then grass.
Yes.
With the help of Mr. Orazetti, we, uh, yeah, we got a deal going, so we'll see, we'll see if it happens.
You did that.
Yeah. Yep, so we're scheduled to meet, meet next month.
All right, athletic committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we met last week and most, um, one of the most important things that we spoke about was a discussion on, uh, Joe Bonanto Field, uh, or complex being named after him, um.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'll make that motion up. I'd like to make a motion, wait, hold on, I make a motion that we send a recommendation to the board of aldermen to consider naming the new multipurpose field, or potentially the entire Shelton High School Athletic Complex in honor of Joe Bonanto. Recognition of his outstanding coaching career, his winning record, and his lasting impact on Shelton athletics and the community.
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, we're, that is technically item number eight on the agenda. So, we were very excited to make that motion. It's, it is, but we still have it actually as an agenda item.
Well, you have a motion.
Okay, we got it, but we, I guess we could still say we have a motion.
Yep.
People in a second.
Do you want?
All in favor?
Madam Chair.
Oh, sure, discussion.
Yes, a couple questions, athletic committee, are there any other names brought forward by?
That was the only.
That was the only name.
Or, uh, chair to suspend it, um, notification sent to aldermen and other parties that we were looking to do this?
Per your request, we sent notification to the alderman, the mayor, uh, and all, anyone who gets our publications for the agendas were notified.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, that will be item number.
Oh, sorry.
Seven E and eight. We'll accept it. Okay, re- reports of liaisons, CES.
Yes, Madam Chair, the SES Rep Council met on Thursday, October 9th, and while I was not able to be in attendance, I can make the following report based on notes sent to me. Uh, Director Chip Dumay continues to advocate for magnet school funding, meeting with several prominent state senators and representatives. Dr. Dumay reported on the ACES collaboration project located here in Shelton, and reported that SES has entered into a revenue collaborative agreement with ACES, and I'm looking to find more details out about what that entails as I was not at the meeting. All SES administrators have been trained in a new teacher evaluation system which will utilize ProTrax as the management tool. The NIAC accreditation and quality improvement support team at SES is beginning to support family childcare providers seeking accreditation. Professional Development Services has launched an AI consortium to support teams of educators and leaders from 18th school districts, with nine days of learning and action planning to support improvement in the use of AI. Professional Development Services will facilitate free regional content area councils to provide content area leaders a chance to collaborate and learn together. Each council will meet three times through the year. The Regional Center for Early Learning hosted their first family workshop in collaboration with the 2-on-1 childcare and united way. Its focus was social emotional learning and ways families can support their child's development. The Special Education Department will host their second annual Para-Educator Conference on Husetonic Community, at Husetonic Community College. There is increased demand after last year's success. I believe from what I was sent, it's, we have election day, but something in what I had, was sent, said November 5th, and that's not election day, so. RCA partnerships continue to grow. With Fairfield University, a dance workshop has been presented by Rebecca Lazier, as well as a workshop for theater and dance students with Derek Lucci and Emily Coats. A bus and free tickets were provided by a benefactor to attend a performance at the Quick Center. Sacred Heart University will allow RCA students to work with a professional audio acting company to gain experience in that field. As far as RCA, they will have their annual tour and information night for next year, it's planned for November 6th, and Director Eric Nyquist hopes to have all his eighth-grade visitations throughout the region completed by then, and I understand he is already booked in Shelton. The 6-6 Magnet School will focus this year on teaching teachers to implement SCL units in classrooms, and they have clubs that have kicked off for the year, among which were Lego Club, Chemistry Cafe, Soccer Club, Yoga Club, and the Drum Line. The next meeting will be at the beginning of November.
Okay, thank you. Abe.
Yeah, we have two items, one is an upcoming webinar on digital wellbeing in the age of social media and AI, that will be on November 6th, which is a Thursday, from 12 to 1:15, so easy to accommodate, and then there's the convention, November 21st and 22nd.
Okay, moving on to superintendent's report, Dr. Serenich.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a brief report as I aired some items that I wanted to cover in the presentations, um, as has already been noted, October is always a, a very active month for our school system, and a very positive one. Um, on top of the assessments that we've been doing to establish baselines on all of our students, those are well underway, and we'll get that data to the teaching and learning committee shortly. Um, many of our students are engaging in a lot of different activities, from anti-bullying activities, um, and one of the most prominent one, as we heard from Brock, is, uh, Shelton has always been a big participant in the Valley Goes Pink across all of our schools, and it's a good way to just show our community effort and involvement. Um, I always liked the month of October, it's a very, as I said, positive and engaging, um, time of year. Uh, to Mrs. Koutash's report, uh, we do have the Nest that is up and running at Period School, um, they are going to be launching, uh, an advertisement campaign, I just spoke to the director, um, who is, is, they're having a PR team come in so they can, they can really kinda send out a video and send it to all the other districts and superintendents, um, in terms of what's happening here. Relative to the report from CES, uh, there was what I would say, a turf dispute, um, because Shelton is technically in CES territory, um, and we collaborated with ACES, I guess, uh, Dr. Dumay was a little upset in the terms of being in Shelton territory, um, I was informed that there was gonna be some discussions between, between the two executive directors of ACES and CES, uh, but there would be no impact on our program or any of the, anything that we outlined as this, and, and as I was told, they, I came to some resolution, um, that I'm not privy to, it was a closed-door discussion, but it was really just CES's inquiry why, uh, ACES tipped, tipped their toe into, uh, their territory, so. Um, but it is a very positive program, one of the things that we're happy to announce is that it is gonna expand slightly, uh, not only is it focused on a pre-K program, um, but in collaboration with ACES, we're also looking to expand it to, um, students in need in kindergarten, so that'll actually, um, increase our enrollment, which is a positive thing for Shelton, you know, to have a, the more enrollment that we have, you know, we talked about the more revenue that it would bring back to the system, um, and as that program is designed, especially for kindergarten students, um, the goal of that would be is to put students who are not kindergarten-ready into this program, um, to get them ready, and then adapt it back into their school environment. For us, it's ideal because it's in our school system, so if we have to send any of our kindergartners to the ACES program, uh, with the collaboration of, of ACES, they'll help them get ready and get them right back to our home school, right here in Shelton. So, very much like we've done, um, with the SPA, the Nest, I believe, is another future home run for our school. That's all I have to say tonight.
Okay. Moving on, comments by the board chair, before I go, I, we're gonna go comments by the vice chair. Or Orazetti would like to say a few things.
Thank you. She takes better notes than I do. It's been, it's been a while, um, but we've accomplished a few projects included to, but not limited to, uh, this, this is awesome, I see my friend, Mr., that's thrilled out in the audience, gymnasium floors, turf field, tennis courts, GPS and safety features on our buses, new storage facility, high school, new roofs, uh, multiple schools, high school cafeteria received an upgrade, energy program, ice, variable switches, new transfer, high school furnaces, dual fuel and energy programs, we instituted security improvement, so working every student now has a laptop, built a new 5, 6, very proud of my own. Fees, uh, from the states, covered, they millions in reversals, new, new storage building place. We upgraded the high school cafeteria, I don't think they remember that. Lunch program going down. We have a new Spadecat. Was it correct? We added soccer and lacrosse program. These two national. We added wit and wisdom. We have student reps on the board. We, uh- We, uh, we have eight. I'm stupid. I do the damage. All by keeping private commerce with the tax, tax dollar. And. Transplanting. Prices. Thank you. I'd like to thank first, Pam. Sure. May not look, but I miss her. Kelly, my daughter, ever. Even when she was bullied. By choice of computers. I know you said that. But, but really, mostly for the time I spent away from my family. I'd like to thank both of you. My fellow board members. We're listening. Thank you.
That's tough.
So, uh, so I leave knowing the Board of Education is in very good hands with this staff. It's as good as it gets, if not better than any I've worked with. From, and I've worked with every superintendent. I know you, you. Counselors. So figure out how many years that is. I, I've worked with them all. I just want you to realize that you can accomplish more. Don't worry about. When comes a time where, it has come a time where the older you get, the older you get, the more you realize. What you want. It's cozy all, food on the table. People make you happy. Like each and every one of you. Now, so.
Madam Chair.
We'll put you.
If I may, I've probably been here with Jimmy as long as anybody. But I do remember sitting at a meeting where we were very, our schools were very crowded. We were trying to figure out what to do. And you are the person who said, why don't we do a five-six school like New Tech? So that, that idea started with Mr. Orizetti, and it's worked out great.
Cause, uh, same, so.
The lion set.
Mm-hmm. First school, Lady. He built as, filed a timber for that. Had a building.
Uh, yep.
Went up to the state. Up to the state. That doesn't. And they agreed. Thank you. That's my one. You know that, right?
I think we're all crying. I'm crying. Because like Dr. Saranich said, we're all volunteers, but it doesn't matter. I feel like we've all been family for years. So everything here, everything we've done, and obviously done many more years, a lot of us, but still, it's, it's, it's emotional. Fine.
Oh.
Thanks, Jimmy.
My granddaughter.
And this is why it's time, because now you could go and enjoy.
Yeah.
Freezy. Okay, moving on, then I'm gonna say a few things. I typed up as well so that I wouldn't ramble on and cry. I might, because he's making me cry. That is a little. And my husband said, make sure you take tissues. Okay. And I'll just read. I'll stay strong and read. Um, I don't have a long list of accomplishments like Ms. Orizetti over here, so mine's a little bit different. Um, good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I just want to say how grateful I am to be standing here tonight, serving you as your chairman. And as a member of the Shelton Board of Education for the past six years, it has truly been one of the greatest honors of my life. First and foremost, to the parents, thank you. Thank you for trusting me to be your voice or allowing me to represent you and your children. Every decision I've made, every vote I have taken, I've done with your families in mind. To our administration, and there's so many of you, so I could, I can't list everyone, but you know who you are. Um, thank you for believing in my vision, which really has always been Shelton's vision. You've supported not only our students, but also my own children. And for that, I'll be forever, forever grateful. Now to my amazing team of board members. We'll start with the Lady D. What a journey it has been. When I first started on the board six years ago, it was a very different atmosphere. There was a lot of political drama. And being new, I'll admit, I even got caught up in that drama myself. But over time, I learned what truly matters. The kids, the schools, the work. And I've been so lucky for these last few years to serve with such genuine, dedicated, a den, dedicated group of women. Uh, let's see. Patty and Kate, you've been with me since day one. We've seen it all together, the good, the bad, the long meetings and the victories. I will always appreciate your loyalty and your friendship. And Kate, I know I'll see you down at J.C.'s. Hopefully Friday night. Joan, even though we've only known each other for a short time, working with you behind the scenes has shown me who you truly, really are. Thoughtful, hardworking, and incredibly dedicated to our schools. Thank you. And then there's Lorraine. When I first joined the board, someone told me you were going to be a little tough. Well, they couldn't have been more wrong. These past few years, it's been nothing but a pleasure working with you. You've been there every time I've called, and I am very grateful for that. It's a perfect reminder that you should never form an opinion based on what others say and always take time to know someone yourself. Thank you. You've done a lot with me together for the past couple of years. So, and thank you. Now on to the guys. Jason, you're doing such a great job. And I know you're gonna be, you're gonna keep growing as a leader. You've got great ideas, and I could already see the pride you have for our schools. I'm excited to see what you do with athletics and buildings and grounds. Just don't be surprised if I still text you and when I hear something breaks or when I drive into the high school parking lot and that multipurpose field is still not done.
I'm sure you will.
Okay.
I know you will.
I know. Old habits die hard. Jim Peahan, thank you for teaching me to stand strong, even when things got tough. You've given me confidence when I doubted myself, and I've learned a lot from your fearlessness. You've always been patient and thoughtful, never rushing to speak. You really listen before you give me your perspective, and that's something I respect about you. Thank you for being. Anthony, I am so glad I met you. You didn't know me at all, and you put your faith in me and stood by my side for the past two years. Even through my state rep race, you were, you were dedicated to me. I'm really gonna miss those morning calls from you on your way to work, just checking in or talking through whatever is going on. You've been a great teammate and even a better friend. And finally, saving the best for last, Jimmy. Words really can't describe my relationship with Jimmy. He's been like a father figure to me. We've been through hell and back, together, multiple times. And somehow, we've always made it to the other side, still talking and fighting the good fight for the kids. I honestly can't imagine my life without him. Jimmy, you've taught me so much. And I'm hoping our phone calls don't end. Because who else am I gonna argue with for hours on end? And still call a friend afterwards? I hope I will. Ah, and as for all of you guys together, the guys, not the ladies, just the guys, I just wanna say, I will not miss having to remind you about every single meeting.
We will, well, we will miss that.
But if you get desperate.
He's the best.
I could be hired back as your secretary for a very reasonable rate of a hundred dollars an hour. I will truly miss you guys.
Uh, we'll miss you more.
Just like tonight. Oh, we have a meeting tonight? Yes, guys, it's seven o'clock. Finally, to the Superintendent, Dr. Saranich. I'm gonna go back in time for a moment. First, when I met you years ago, you were principal. And let's just say, we didn't see eye to eye. I was definitely probably a crazy helicopter parent back then. Though sort of am, but it definitely was. There was definitely some parent drama mixed in there. But fast forward to today, I can honestly say how proud I am of the working relationship we have built. When I became chairman, I know it could be nerve-wracking to have new leadership, but you and I quickly found common ground. I've always pushed for fairness and equality across the district, and you never fought me on that. You've always kept me informed, and not just for the sake of communication, but for, but for education. I feel through our partnership, I've learned so much about what it takes to really run a district and what our needs truly are. So now, as I move forward in my role of state rep, I carry that knowledge and that perspective with me that you taught me. And I feel confident fighting for Shelton needs because I truly understand them. So I want to say thank you and this experience.
Thank you.
So tonight, as I close this chapter, I just want to say thank you to everyone. Every teacher, every parent, every student, every administrator and fellow board member who's been part of my journey. I have grown so much over the past six years, not just as a leader, but as a person. And no matter what role I hold, my heart will always be with Shelton Public Schools. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Hopefully that wasn't too long.
Now, we need you on the Education Committee of the state.
I know. Yeah, there you go.
As long as you love me.
I know. Sorry, that was a long time that I spoke. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. I usually cut my comments short, as you guys all know. So we will move on, um, to, um, you know, basically, uh, end the meeting. We still have, for your information, the enrollment report and staffing report is attached, as always. And, oh, did I, oh, my lord, celebrations. I'm so sorry, I'm just jumping ahead. Anybody have celebrations?
Rain's birthday.
Oh. My, mine's already passed. Oh, but yours is, okay. That's right. We're just gonna go. Happy birthday. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you. Any other celebrations that we missed? Now we have our student reps back, so they could fill in on all of that part. Okay. So just.
Let's just, again, Amy, thank you very much for serving.
Absolutely.
Few years. You've done a very good job.
I think that we've all worked really well together for the past couple of years.
Yes, thank you so much.
Keep that going, keep that going. Keep that going. I know you guys will.
Will miss the reminders.
Because seven of you guys are still here, so I know you guys will keep that going. Somebody. All right. For, again, for your information, enrollment report and staffing report is attached, and I will get a motion to adjourn.
Um, Madam Chair, the, uh, item.
That was tabled.
We tabled.
Okay, that was the fifteenth.
I get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.